That is great.
Yeah.
So when we drive through, it's like, well, you know, I bought my car with him. That bothered me a lot. The only thing is I pull over so that I can tell my windshield. Otherwise, it's, it's a freeing feeling. But ten more dents on it, I'll never see him. It's great. Yeah, it was perfect. Last time we drove through Hillsboro, every other car like pulled over and retrieved.
There's a big one. We won.
What are you doing? What's, what's the worst case scenario here?
The Royals PTA. Sorry about that.
Yeah.
And when you mention your chances, oh, no, you're right.
No joke.
We got killed.
Oh, I know.
Not surprised.
No, no.
I'll send that to you.
I did run into her. She said we were some three or four years ago.
Yes, it is. I think that stuff's working for you.
Um, actually, yeah, I mean, my nose don't seem very good. Bonzo. Part of it.
See, they also.
Hydro.
Okay.
I saw one.
And what's mine?
I saw a problem. What did she do? I can't sell.
No, it's not bad.
Not quite.
No. Maybe you need to charge them. How are you liking the ride?
I love it. I do. It's funny, the things that you miss, like with the van, I could, with a clerk, I could open every door. I have to open my own doors now. Yeah, I gotta lift the back up.
Yeah.
Pull the back down. It's funny, the things it doesn't have, but Natalie and Kathy got a new vehicle too. They were like, hey, how are you tonight? Very good. Um, after I sent you a message about cars, I went further in the package and I'm like, oh, well, here's what I needed. I don't know why this other sheet starts to say.
No.
Look at the page that says dates and for each year, each project, so.
That summary stretching thing.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Not, not the spreadsheet, I mean, the individual sheets that had.
The format.
Yeah.
Yeah, I figured out.
What?
The total cost of the project is the same on some of those before, before, um, Johnson County's contribution. I sent it to you. Anyway, then I found the spreadsheet that had what I wanted anyway, but I was like, those seem.
Those are out of your stuff, so we don't make much of a discussion. They should be right.
Well, and some of them have the exact same project as. Three of them, like, I was like, wow. And then I thought, well, if we did them all, it would just convenient.
I think Joe found that before he sent. I think we sent you guys a draft and then before we did cars, I think.
Okay. Well, I saved the draft.
I'll take a look. Well, I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
Close on the website.
Uh, Kristen?
Kristen?
You need to sit on there or something else? Boxing?
Yeah. We got a couple of road closures and street things.
She looked at it. Yeah, yeah, she looked at it. Kristen walking. Anyway. Natalie taught me that I have keyless entry. The handles had a button on them. I broke the door. I pushed the button, opened the door. She's like, that's keyless. Check. You don't have to get your thing out. Let me, I was like, oh, I, I had a consultant who got in the car with me and showed me how to use everything. Didn't show me how to open the door.
I just assumed that, yeah.
I know, that's what that is.
And then today they said, how's Remote Star working on this hot day? And I was like, I forgot about Remote Stars. That's one of the reasons I wanted that car.
Do you have the app? That's, I have that with mine and I love it. I like. Sitting at my desk and I'm just like, or like I'm in the grocery store and I can hit the button, start it.
I have not tried it yet.
I have a remote star. It's called Hey Kid.
I had.
Go start to head some.
My wish list was small. Remote Star heated seats. Those were two million good ones for me. I'm good gas mileage. I'm getting, I'm averaging about twenty-five to the gallon, so I'll take that. Yeah, it's fun. Oh man, you should have called me. I could have worn blue a lot too. Thanks for filling up the fridge.
Oh, yeah.
I just thought there was room to, yeah.
Small enough stuff in the cabinets.
I probably want to talk to you about yesterday. Got words yesterday. Put some notes down, talk to my keys. Unbelievable.
All right, guys, we're gonna go ahead and get started this evening. I want to welcome you all to the regularly scheduled meeting for the governing body of Spring Hill, Kansas, on June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. And if you guys are able to stand with me, if you can, we have Pa- uh, Pastor Angie McCarty from Spring Hill United Methodist Church. Or Spring Hill Methodist Church.
Well, actually, Spring Hill United Methodist Church closed on May nineteenth in preparation for opening as Church of the Resurrection in Spring Hill on September eighth. So we're super excited about that transition and coming to Spring Hill and hopefully being a part of this community in a more significant way. So let's pray. God, we are thankful for all of the ways that you move in our lives, even when that, um, those moves involve change and change is hard. So as we lead through change, as we walk beside people who are going through change, help us to have a spirit of compassion. Help us to experience your grace in everything we do and to spread that grace to others, especially through the work that we do here in this city. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Please remain standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And, uh, Mr. Brian Peel is out of town, but I do believe we have him on the phone call. Are you there, Brian?
I can hear you guys. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. With that, Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Peel?
Here.
Mr. Van Houden?
Here.
Mrs. Feback?
Here.
Mr. Verbraken?
Here.
Mayor, we do have a quorum present.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. We did have a request to remove the executive session and then also add discussion item number eight, uh, water tower use. Other than those two items, are there any other questions or comments on the agenda? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I am moved that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Got a motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Next, we'll move on to citizen participation. This is a time when the public can come in and speak about whatever they would like to talk about. Um, if you would like to speak, we ask that you come up and state your name and your address. Um, we did have Katie Hoffman on the list.
Hi, thank you for letting us come and speak to you. I'm Katie. This is Gary. We are with the Kansas Silver Haired Legislature. It's a statewide organization. Uh, it was formed in nineteen eighty-two, created by an act of Congress in nineteen sixty-nine. One needs to be sixty years of age to be a member. Uh, we are elected. It's unicameral organization. We meet in Topeka in October of the statewide organization does. Here in Johnson County, we have six representatives. The, the other big cities, Wichita, Topeka, or counties, uh, also have six representatives, but most of the counties across the state of Kansas have only one.
It, it's based on the, uh, representatives that we have at the state Topeka. So if your county has one representative Topeka, you get one for several of. Uh, Johnson County, we have six, so that's where we have six.
Our purpose basically is to advocate for seniors. We are not a lobbyist organization. We, uh, are volunteers. We do receive a little money from Johnson County, uh, but everything else is pretty much at our own expense. We here in Johnson County meet once a month, provided we have some issues to discover or discuss. And we met this morning in, um, and made a determination on which issues we think should be presented to the legislature. The state, the executive committee will meet in July with issues from all of the areas over the state of Kansas. And then we'll pick about six or eight issues to, to work on. So we, we do contact our legislators when we, whenever we want to. Let's see, we're elected every two years and our next election will be in next March. What else? Let's see. What?
That's about it.
That's it. But we, we do welcome input from citizens if you have issues and remember that we're statewide issues. We can't do anything about federal or county. We sound, we really can't do anything about state either, but we try, so.
And our stipend basically pays for one night in Topeka. That's it. So, so our meetings and everything, you know, like when we come here, it's all free credit, just to meet you guys.
Well, we just wanted to tell you about us and, um, if you have suggestions, um, I think that we gave you our information. Oh, there you are. Okay. Um, and it has our names and the emails and phone numbers, so, um, let us know if you have any suggestions or ideas or want to talk to us. We're glad to answer.
I have a question for you.
Okay.
Um, is this, can we talk?
Yeah, go ahead. It's kind of, it's sort of a semi presentation, so yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I was just gonna ask you, are there any issues you want to share with us tonight when it comes to seniors, like in our city or state?
That's kind of what I was gonna ask is what are a couple of your priorities that you guys are focused on?
Okay, now this, this past year, support Medicaid expansion, establish a medical cannabis advisory board to explore and make recommendations regarding the expanded medical use of cannabis. Support voting rights of seniors and all other registered voters. Expand existing grandparents as Caregivers Act to provide financial, financial assistance to other relatives providing care to children. Support the elimination of the tax cliff and increase income thresholds to qualify for an exemption of social security benefits from state income tax. One, most of these issues will be submitted next year, but also transportation is a big issue. Um, what else did we talk about?
I know a lot, a lot of other areas think that Johnson County does not have an issue with transportation, because we've got, we're utopia. And it's not true, so.
But we work closely with also the area agency on aging. So, I don't know. We just urge everybody to vote.
Yeah.
Um, and contact your representatives or senators if there's something that, and do it a lot, because they don't always do like we want them to do, but we keep, we keep working at it, so.
Right, seniors, right now, seniors are twenty-four percent of our population in Kansas.
Six hundred and some thousand, like six hundred and sixty thousand.
And a lot of people don't realize how important to vote. Whether you agree with me or not, vote.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
We don't want to take up your meeting time, but thank you.
We talked about an ice cream place. We're headed down.
Good job. It's a good idea.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Bye-bye.
Is there anyone else that would like to step up? That's the only people we had on the list, so if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to. Yes, sir. And you kind of know the deal. If you could just state your name and address.
Rodolfo Alavalon, nineteen four nineteen West two hundredth Street, Spring Hill. I had two questions on one of your agenda items, on the donation of the property. Uh, one, and I don't know if anybody can answer it, but do we know what the, uh, value or fair market value of the property is, just to let citizens know what they're giving up? Secondly, uh, I noticed that, uh, in, in, um, the presentations that were made, that, uh, the rec commission can't buy property, but they can own it. Can they sell it? And if they can sell it, because it's a quick claim deed, I really don't know whether there's any stipulation that they can't sell it, or if they sell it, it reverts back to the city or anything like that. Anyhow, those are my questions. Thank you.
I have the same one, so we'll go over that.
Yep, thank you very much. Very good questions. Anyone else? If not, we'll go ahead and close citizen participation this time and move on to the consent agenda. These are items that the staff considers to be routine maintenance, but if there are any questions or comments, now would be your turn. If not, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is Brian still on there?
He said.
Okay, I missed him. Sorry, I can hear him.
Hi.
Oh, there you go. Thanks. All right, motion carries five zero zero. Next, we'll move on to formal counsel action. The first item on the agenda is consider approval of donation of four parcels to Spring Hill Recreation Commission. And Mr. Low, you have the floor, and also if somebody wants to cut Brian off, and then we'll get him when we're done.
You can mute me. I will be sitting out of this.
Or, or one of the Bryans, I should say. I gotta get used to that.
Uh, while I'm talking, Ms. Dunn is going to check on the value of the property for that first question. Um, as for the second question for sales, uh, my understanding is they can enter into sale of property agreements. Um, there's nothing in these current ones, so I'll get to that again at the tail end, but since those are the two fresh questions that says we have so far. Um, I was up here about a month ago, talked through the donation of this, of these parcels. Um, I think the rec commission, rec commission has been here, talked about, I think they're here tonight. Um, generally, we are donating because they cannot by state law buy their own property. Otherwise, I'm sure they would have come in and offered to buy it. Um, so the, uh, the one thing I did note as we were doing the quick claim deeds is that those were originally the rec commission's property, and then they gave it to the city. One parcel in the seventies and one in the nineties, so at this point, it's kind of just circling back to them. Um, but the understanding is that they will be investing capital improvements into the, uh, the property and didn't want to be dumping a lot of money into something they didn't own, which is, makes some level of sense. But if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer it. Uh, otherwise, I think we've talked about this a few times, so I'll turn it over to you all to consider and discuss.
Yeah, I guess my only question is, are we able to put any stipulations to say it can't be sold and it has to be donated back to the city if they don't want to own it anymore?
We could work in some covenants that run with the land. Um, wouldn't be able to, obviously, it would come up next meeting. We're not gonna do it tonight then.
No, no, that's, I'm fine.
Change up my stuff, but yeah.
That was my big thing. I guess my concern last time was, one, having some sort of saying how it's changed if ever, if ever, and then also, you know, not allowing a sale, having it have to come back to the city if they're gonna get rid of it type thing. So those are two things that are issues for me. So I, I, as far as donating goes, I'm not, I don't have a concern of donating it. I think for me, it's just a matter of a little bit of control over it, since we are gonna give it up.
Okay.
And that was my same concern, so I'm glad you brought it up. That was something I was gonna ask as well, because I definitely think we should put a clause in there to, if, you know, if they decide they don't want it anymore, it does need to come back to the city and not them sell it to somebody else. Not that they would, but not them sell it to somebody else for profit, you know?
Well, like, my, my, my thought is Jake and Brian could be gone in five years, and then we don't know who's gonna come in and can just make decisions, so I'd like to have a little bit of, you know, safeguards in there.
Quick clarification that Lane caught me on. It was the rec association that owned the property, not commission, so.
Yeah.
Sorry, too many recs running around. Um, but yeah, so we can do that. I guess the clarification I want from you all as I sit down on this, what type of restrictions on future sale are you thinking? Is it a, they cannot sell it, a right of first refusal, where we have the first chance to buy it? Uh, is it a revision, reversion to the city if they want to get rid of it, that we get it back for free?
I think we get it back.
Yeah.
If we're, if we're donating it, I think we get it back for free. We shouldn't have to donate it and then, let's say, something happens in five years, have to buy it back. That, that doesn't make sense to me.
I don't know if there's any thoughts over there.
Yeah, you guys have any? We're talking a lot over here.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna take over. Sounds like we're on the same page.
Okay, cool. We will modify those quick claims and.
And then, um, is this including the old pool and everything too? Or what are the four parcels covering?
Is the pool in those parcels? Right, yeah. Yeah, so it's the Supplefield. Sorry, I'm trying to picture. One of them doesn't have any address, but it's that whole rectangle of the Supplefield's pool park, the two parking lots.
Yeah.
That facility, so.
And then, yeah, I mean, I would like to have something in there where we can have us, you know, at least to input for what that pool turns into and then really just kind of. Good one, chief. But, I mean, for me, I'd like to have something in there. I don't know what thoughts are for everybody else, but that's kind of.
Candidly, that's probably getting to the border of what we can put in a real estate contract as far as if we're giving away the land.
Yeah.
We can retain right of first refusals, donation back if they don't inherit it, but, uh, keeping control of the property and their use for it is, I mean, once you deed something away.
Yeah, no, I get that.
Same reason the prior, my car can't tell me I'm not.
Anything they do is gonna have to go through planning, right, and.
Right, so they'd be coming to the city for significant changes.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Yeah, and I mean, it's also, you know, it's a public board, so, um, most of their changes, I would imagine, are gonna be pretty well advertised before it happens, so.
Yeah, okay.
All right, cool. Well, we can table this then. Is everybody good with, with everything else other than just those few concerns?
Did we get a value or was she able to get that?
Looks like she's, oh, what timing. She's walking in right now. Did we find a value?
Yes.
Okay. Um, as she comes up with a value, um, the motion then would be rather than approve or deny, just to move to table consideration of this matter until the next meeting, and I'll, I'll bring it back in two weeks.
Okay.
This, uh, we received notice of assessed value on all the properties owned by the city earlier this year from Johnson County. Doing it very quickly, looking at Washington Street and Allen Street and some areas I can only assume are that area, because it doesn't say ballpark or anything like that. The total value of land and improvements is about five hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
Relative, it's not a huge amount. Um, is that gonna cause any kind of, um, rating issues since we're losing some assets as far as like the ratings go for when we get bonding? I know we're always.
They don't look at that very closely to the best.
I just wanted to make sure if we're losing a half million in assets, if that's gonna be, although we're not really losing it, if we're able to put in a clause, we get it back if they're gonna get rid of it.
Also, we're probably adding road value and sewer values and stuff at a rate equal or greater than that anyway.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions or comments?
I mean, is there anything else we should know about the process or is it pretty straightforward? It's just.
I mean, that's the main process, so I, you know, uh, it's donation, donation with some sort of strings attached and right of first refusal. Um, I don't know the legality of it, but if you all wanted to co-own it, we could look into that. Probably would take me more than two weeks to get to the bottom of it. And also, at a certain point, um, we might be asking too much of the recreation commission as far as just saying, forget about it, we'll just stop putting money into it.
Yeah.
Um, maybe they won't, maybe they're nicer people than me as an attorney assumes everybody is, but, uh, we can start those conversations with them and, and kind of try to get a little creative and see what we can work out if you'd like. I'll investigate some of those options and bring it back. Um.
I don't mind that option either, if that's, if they're open to it, but.
And I, that's completely off the cuff. I have no idea how that works as the municipality, if we're allowed to do that with a recreation commission, so.
Yeah.
You know, it's not like me just putting my wife on my house when we.
Well, that's like saying, can the county and the city own property together? I don't know.
Right, yeah, it would probably get pretty complicated with some form of inter-local agreement. Right. Yeah, it would probably get pretty complicated with some form of inter-local agreement, and at that point, we might be making things too complicated just to make them complicated, so.
No, as long as we have a way, hey, we get it back for free if there's, you know, if they decide they don't want it anymore.
Yeah, I think we gotta do one or the other, either keep it or give it to them, I think.
Yeah, I, I mean.
Trying to co-own it.
Probably gonna be tough, yeah.
No, I agree. That's probably just the only way to retain some sort of say over how the use is, for your point, but I, I don't know.
Just ask for a handshake deal to, hey, make sure, ask us if there's a, if we have any issues when it comes to a huge change, but, you know. No, outside of that, I think I'm okay with it.
And we do have a rep from the Rec Commission here. Do you want to say anything? If not, we're good to go. Sure. If you have anything to say, yeah, sure, just, just so the public can hear you.
Jake Moore, Spring Hill Recreation Representative here today. I, I think what Mayor Burke was saying is like, it's either gonna be, gotta be ours.
Yeah.
Or yours, because the co-ownership is basically what we're doing right now, and I think the only he, the main, like we said, we're like, I know you're worried about people selling it five years now, but if we put ten million dollars into the ballpark, we're gonna be owing money on that property for ten years, for whatever, whatever amount the loans are gonna be for, so. I would imagine that it's gonna be, if we dump that money into it, it will be ours for a very long time, so I wouldn't, your concerns about that, I don't think. Because even if current staff is gone in five years, we're probably, the investments we're talking about are gonna be owing, probably gonna have to, we'll have a lot of investment in there that wouldn't make sense to.
And you probably wouldn't get your return trying to.
Correct, no.
Do you have the ability to give us any insight on what you want to do with it?
Well, I know, like I said, I've talked before, we want to replace the original lights, um, we had one catch on fire earlier this, last week, so.
I was there, what happened?
Yep, so that, that's gonna be one of our big projects, and then the pool is the other one. And the fencing's gonna get me redone. Like, I think we, I forget the exact, I don't have the presentation in front of me right now, but lights are gonna be a very, like.
Big expense.
Very, very big expense, and redoing the parking lots and making it up to date, like I said, we've, hasn't, I don't want to say neglected, but it's, hasn't had a lot of love and care in the last sixty years that it's been
Yeah.
Open, so a lot of the fencing and lights and stuffer from when it was built, so we got a lot of, so that's the big, I guess, reason why we're coming to you is because our board is very, wants to put a lot of money in it, because that's where we need to start putting money in our, into it, but we they're afraid that the opposite, if we put money into it, the, and you said you could, would sell the property out from under us, and we wouldn't, would lose all that money.
No, and that's where I was kind of in the same boat as you. I'm like, hey, we're kind of in the same boat, like, hey, we just don't want to give it and have it sold.
Yeah, it's our only, it would be our only land, it would be very, would not be smart of us to get the property.
No, but, yeah, so I think we're kind of on the same page when it comes to that, but yeah. So yeah, I would still like to have the, the give back, but other thing else, I think I'm okay with.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
So I need to do it as table for next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Let me come back. I move to table the consideration for the donation of four parcels to Spring Hill Recreation Commission until Attorney Lau can.
The next meeting with the twenty.
Oh, just the next meeting?
Yeah.
Next meeting on the twenty-seventh, June twenty-seventh?
I second it.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh yeah, I forgot he's not on there. Opposed? Motion carries four zero zero. Somebody wanna?
I'll text.
Get Brian? Or get Mr. Peel?
I can he.
You there?
I can hear you now. I'm good.
Alright. Moving on, next item on the agenda is consider approval of agreement with HDR Engineering to provide engineering service for the Safe Streets and Roads for All SS4A Planning and Demonstration Grant Application, and Mr. Massey, you have the floor.
Big one. Sorry, distracted by the spider web. Mayor, Council, before you this evening, we have a consideration for an agreement with HDR Engineering for a supplemental grant for the SS4A project. We have Taylor McHenry, wanted to make sure I said that right. Here this evening to give a short presentation about the project and what the SS4A supplemental grant program is, and he can answer any of the technical questions.
I just have a couple of slides here, so I will plug my laptop in. So, so like Lane said, my name's Taylor McHenry. I run the Infrastructure Funding Group at HDR. We oversee the Kansas and Missouri area, but we write grants all over the country. We're, we're big proponents of the SS4A program, you know. Our, our group at HDR, we, we find value in the program. It promotes building safe infrastructure for, for citizens, and so we, huge, huge proponents of it. I do want to go over just what the program is, just in case those of you don't know. Like I said, the program is part of the BIL, and so there was five billion allocated over a five-year period from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six. About a billion dollars per year is what they wanted to spend on the program. Now, they have not been able to spend that amount of money every, every single year, so there's been in fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three, they've spent less than that amount. So they actually have more money to spend this year than they have previously. So they have about one, one point two four billion this year. And the money, there's two different, there's two pots of money. So there's what's called Planning and Demonstration money. And so the city's already taken advantage of that. They've, you've been able to secure funding for a safety action plan, which is the first step of kind of starting your safety program. You can also apply for enhancements to your existing plans, so you can apply for like ADA transition plans, you know, trail plans, things like that. And you can also apply for what's called pilot projects as well, so if you wanted to try out like a road diet project, or try out a roundabout somewhere, add bike lanes to see how the public will interact with it and see how you like it. And then there's also another pot of money for what's called implementation grants, and so this is for like very permanent projects. You want to add turn lanes, you want to, you know, completely revitalize a street. You want to add, you know, you know, cycle tracks, bike lanes, things like that. So I just wanted to give kind of an overview of the program. And when, when Lane and I discussed, you know, kind of what the needs of the city are, he, he had mentioned that he's, he's really looking into building up the trail infrastructure here. So there is another opportunity to apply for Planning and Demonstration funding. And so Lane and I were talking about, okay, what's, what's the, you know, how do we take advantage of, you know, applying for these funds, and so we came up with, with a project that's down south along Webster, and, and basically Webster and two twenty, two hundred and twenty-third street and Victory there, kind of in that, that triangle. There's a potential there to build a multi-use path and add crossing, crosswalks as well, so add, adding like signalized crossings, RRFBs, what we call them. And he said that there is a need there. He, he mentioned that the public would be supportive of that, because they're, they want to provide some connectivity, you know, walkability from like the middle school, which there is sidewalk that goes to the middle school, but it ends kind of down at Webster here, near the Aquatic Center. So be able to just kind of connect, kind of some of the areas down south up with the middle school and Aquatic Center, so. We, we thought this would be a great opportunity to try to apply for funding, to be able to be able to build what I like to call a pilot project. Looking at what trails would work for you guys, like what, what type of trails would work, what types of crossings would work, and kind of get the public's feedback on them, and determine how, how they're maintained, you know, and things like that, so. That's a little bit about the project. You know, the scope could change, you know, a little bit as we go through the application itself, but I just wanted to present that all to you and get your thoughts on that.
So how do these fundings work? Is it like a, kind of like the cars where it's a percentage of the project, or can you get more than?
So the way that it works is you have to provide, the local applicant has to provide twenty percent match.
Okay.
If, if you do not have that match, there, the state of Kansas has what's called the Infrastructure Hub, so you're able to actually go to the hub. They have about two hundred million dollars allocated to help municipalities like Spring Hill with their match money. So you can go to them and, and ask for match money, and so they would cover that, and that'd be considered local match. The other eighty percent would be through the SS4A.
This program here, okay. That's kind of cool.
Correct, yes. And a lot of municipalities haven't been taking advantage of that, the Structure Hub, so.
What's kind of the success rate on the ones you've done here in the last couple of years, as far as grant, or application to actual, you know, being awarded the grant?
Very high.
Okay.
And so I will say, with this program, it's in particular, I mean, they can't, they can't give the money out.
I was gonna say, it sounds like they're not giving it out.
So they're, they're, they did it kind of, in the past, they've done just a deadline for planning and demonstration activities, and then a deadline for implementation grants. But this year, they've done three different deadlines. They've done one deadline, which ended April fourth, and that was just for what we would apply for, planning and demonstration activities. They've already awarded those. There was ninety-nine applicants, and ninety-nine of them received funding.
Awesome.
And then there, there was another deadline for implementation. We have yet to see if there's been any winners for that, but we've helped, you know, some municipalities create grant applications for that, but.
So will we be going into the twenty-five one then?
No, so there's another, there's a third one.
Okay.
And it's August twenty-ninth is the deadline for that one. So there's one more opportunity this year to do that.
Is that for just the planning, or is that for the implementation and everything?
For planning, just for planning and demonstration activities.
Okay. So what does that mean? Is that just the engineering basically, or is that?
Yeah, so, so planning activities, you know, if, you guys have already been awarded money to fund a safety action plan. So any other supplemental planning that you do would have to be kind of supplemental to that plan, it'd have to be like, if something came out of that study, let's say, you know, there's a huge need for pedestrian infrastructure, let's say. And so you wanted to supplement that with a trail plan. You could apply for money to do that.
Okay.
And then for demonstration activities, that's, you know, like we're talking about here. If you want to try out a new cross, you know, crosswalk technology, if you want to add some trails, you know, trail system and see how it is working out for your city, so that way you can, it's kind of like a, again, like a pilot project to test, to see if you want to apply it everywhere else.
Okay.
Does that help?
So do we have to, say we get approved for the planning portion, and then do we have to go back and apply again for the implementation portion?
Right, so once your safety action plan is done, when you create your safety action plan, whoever, whoever does that for you is gonna look at your city holistically. They're gonna look at existing safety issues. Then they're also gonna look at where are some, some kind of riskier areas that maybe don't have a, historically have a lot of crashes, like segments or intersections that have a lot of crashes, but maybe some that maybe could potentially in the future if there's growth, or you know, the, things like that, so out of that plan, you're actually gonna highlight some target areas where you need improvements to be able to, you know, enhance safety there. And so you'll come up with, at the end of the plan, you'll have a list of projects, and then you turn around and you apply for implementation funding to, to build those, those enhancements.
Do you provide help with the safety action plan as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we, we, yeah, we've written, yeah, several safety action plans already, yeah.
So is this part of the plan, then? This what we're looking at right here? Because there is no, there's no walking on these, these are roads.
Yeah, it's interesting that you bring that up, and it's hard to tell because we haven't, you know, gone into your safety action plan yet. But I will say KDOT has a tool that they've created. It's called Vulnerable, Vulnerable Road User like assessment tool, and they actually identified this segment of Webster. They, they looked at the whole state. But they identified this segment of Webster as a high-risk area for vulnerable road users.
Sure.
And they look at various factors. I mean, they look at the geometry of the road, they look at, you know, walkability and, and things like that. So we thought this would be a great starting point to get, you know, get some infrastructure put in here first before, you know. I'm sure in the safety action plan, it'll, it would come out. This, this would be an issue area, but.
Yeah, I've run all over these roads, and there's nothing.
Yeah.
For, and they're ten-foot, correct? You said ten-foot paths?
Yeah, ten-foot paths. I mean, they could be used for bicycle, you know, walking, running.
I was gonna say, I can go both ways on ten-foot. Where do you, I don't see a cost associated with this. How do you guys?
That will be determined, yeah, when we write the application.
Oh, okay. So it's, that comes at the application time?
Yes, yes, is if we write the application, we'll come up, you have to provide a cost estimate.
Okay.
And then you also have to provide a schedule for, you know, how, how long is it gonna take for you to construct?
Okay.
You know, your, your project, so.
Okay. I think it sounds like a pretty cool deal.
Yeah, I like it too.
And you know, nothing's guaranteed, right?
Yeah.
But we've, we've seen a lot of success, and we're kind of, you know, telling other municipalities, like, you should probably apply.
Yeah, ninety-nine out of ninety-nine, guy.
Is there times where, let's say, you do the first couple steps, you know, and you get awarded each one, and then you get to like the second or third step, and you don't get awarded that? I mean, does that happen very often, or typically if you get past the first few, you know, roadblocks of the grant, do you typically make it to the finish line?
It's such a, it's such a new program that we're just now starting, like municipalities who are awarded safety action plan funding the first year are just now applying for implementation funding. So it's, it's, it's hard to tell.
Gotcha.
That's probably why it's so low too, because that cost is a lot lower than the actual implementation.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's gonna be backloaded it probably?
It's a really.
We gotta get on it sooner than later.
Yeah, sounds, sounds good to me. I mean, this is one of the things we've all talked about up. Walkability, connectivity, I mean, we all know.
Yeah.
This, this is a step in the right direction. We have these intersections where people can't walk across. I mean, it's pretty much impossible to walk across two hundred and twenty-third.
Would this be redoing the roads too, and like adding sidewalks, or just trail?
Probably just the trail.
Okay. I'll give something at least.
But, I mean, a ten-foot trail, I mean, going along there could basically.
I was gonna say.
Right.
Be a great sidewalk.
Okay, so you're presenting this, so are we gonna vote? So we'll vote, and then what, like, what's the next steps?
We're voting on, yeah, just to get into an agreement with.
Okay.
Get an agreement with them, so they can start the process.
It's for a, an amount not to exceed nine thousand nine hundred and five dollars.
Okay, I didn't see that on here, so that's why I wasn't sure.
Yeah, it's back within, in the scope of work.
Do I need to add that in, or just do the record?
Yeah, probably.
Yeah.
Alright.
Any other questions or comments?
No, I like it. I think the eighty, you said eighty-twenty split was what it.
Right.
And then we can even.
And you get the twenty from the.
Yeah. Paid for, yeah.
Right, you can contact the Infrastructure Hub and try to get them to help you with your match, if you're eligible.
Sounds like win.
Just also to point out that we anticipate moving forward with the, the study. As soon as the Fed, the feds get us back the contract, which we've been waiting on for, for a month, we'll go out through the RFP process, get an engineering firm on board, and then proceed with that hopefully later this year, maybe in July time, timeframe. And then we're hoping that we get that completed in time to meet the deadline for submission for implementation next year in twenty twenty-five, so that they, they don't make anything easy. There's a lot of steps involved, but that's, that's the goal, is to hopefully be able to apply in twenty twenty-five.
So for this, though, we need to get something in by the twenty-ninth of August?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was just trying to get a timeframe, because I kind of like stuff to move.
Sure.
Yeah. What was that amount again?
Nine thousand nine hundred and five dollars, I believe.
Nine thousand nine, and even?
Even.
Alright. What about you do to make her job harder? All right, you ready? All right, I move to approve the agreement with HDR Engineering to provide engineering services for the twenty twenty-four safe streets and roads for all SS four A planning and demonstration grant, and authorize the mayor to sign the required documents not to exceed nine thousand nine hundred and five dollars.
Got a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries five zero zero, thank you, sir. With that, that ends formal counsel action this time, we'll move on to the discussion item, and the first item on discussion is the twenty twenty-five budget. And Mrs. Dunn, you have the floor.
I wondered if we wanted to let Mr. Lau go first, I think he may have a more brief uh subject than I do.
Oh, the other discussion item?
It would take a motion to amend.
Oh, then we're fine.
So it's up to you all, but.
Yeah, it's up to you.
I think we could just keep it. I don't expect it to be a super late night anyway.
I gotta be here anyway, so.
Yeah, does that mean make it quick, Rhonda? Okay, I've been whittling away on the budget. I should start with good evening, mayor and council, thank you for being here tonight. Um I wanted to start tonight going over, thank you, the financial snapshot. Since I have been here, we've handed it out every month, and I don't think we've ever really gone over it. And so I thought here at budget time, this is probably a good time to at least show you all the pages in it so you can be familiar with them. So, important thing on the first page is at the bottom of the page. Back last year or so ago, we had some banks in the United States that failed. The majority of the city's money, which at the end of May was a value of just over twenty-six million dollars. The majority of that money sits at the State Bank of Spring Hill, and the remainder sits at uh First Options Bank, both local branches, and we um I want to show you here that it is a, they are required by statute to pledge securities of some kind to guarantee the public's money, and so in the front of this, we show you each time the value of pledged securities, which was um twenty-nine million dollars, almost thirty, and that we also have FDIC insurance, and so I never want you to worry about the money, I'm not worried about any banks failing. But this proves out to you that the right securities are in place to guarantee the public's money. Important piece at the bottom of the first page. So then, the next page, as as accountants like to do, we talk about the key components of revenue. We show you what the budget is for the current year, where we are year-to-date, and where we are at this, were at this time last year. And so I presented revenue to you last time and talked about, we're really on target to hit our our budget and exceeded, I think, by about seven hundred thousand, and this gives you more of the details about each of those components. Um these are May reports, and so we received the other half of our ad valorem tax uh in June, and we have received it from both counties, so this will look differently at the end of June. Um but I do expect us to hit the target that we set. Anytime in here, if you'd like to interrupt with a question, please do so, I'm not gonna go every page, every number. You guys are all able to read, but if there's any questions or anything, I'd like to um point that out. For the public, this is posted on our website, and so they can pull up a copy um or ask for one at City Hall if they'd like one. So these are our key property taxes, special assessments, and then franchise fees. And then we go into sales and use tax, and interestingly, our use tax, which is paid on things shipped into Spring Hill, not things sold across the counter in Spring Hill, it's growing much faster in use tax than in sales tax, and so this shows you where we are this year versus last year, and we are right on target to hit our twenty twenty-four budget. We will, the earlier months of this year were lower, unless I showed you this last time, they were not lower, they ran much closer to prior year, the more the closer months here have run over, so we're running about five percent over year-to-date, which is great. Um we've experienced higher ten and twelve percent um increases over prior year, so that's an economy thing, I'm quite sure. Um one of the biggest losses there year-to-year is building materials and supplies, and hopefully that's gonna be coming back. And this shows you the ten-year trend as well as monthly comparisons, you can see where February, which would have been December or Christmas, um wasn't as good as as a prior year, it sat near close to it, but since then, we've been exceeding and on a good uptick. This page talks about debt, we've had Baker Tilly here and talked to you about debt in the big picture. Um this gets a little more specific, um this shows you the temporary note that we have in place for the Webster Road Project, um our general obligation debt, as well as our lease purchase debt, and it shows you the payments we're going to make yet here in twenty twenty-four. And then I like this graph at the bottom that shows you how that debt is paid. So some of it is by special assessments, property tax, sales tax. Um I think the snapshot is not something I want you to memorize go around and quote, but I think it's really a great tool for things like this, if you have someone ask you about debt, or you have questions yourself, this is really the record, if you will. Um then, and it's in your possession, you don't have to have me answer every question for you, a lot of it's at your fingertips.
Does it update once a month, or is it kinda updating throughout the month?
It is updating, we we finish it and report it at the end of the month when the books close. So we'd like to have it by the second meeting of every month. I've had an employee out that usually does this, and so we're playing catch-up, so that's why you have May here earlier in June.
I couldn't really, I didn't know when it was, cuz I would, like, I've gone on the website and then it's changed, and I'm like, okay, well, I didn't know if it was updating like more often, or if it's just once a month.
Just once a month. Um this one is about general fund revenues, it's shouldn't be anything surprising here. After five months, we should be forty-two percent of our current budget, and you can see um we're basically on track for revenue, and it also is a great visualization of property tax is the name of the game, sales tax runs right along with it, gives you an idea of where the money comes from. Uh some things on here, like the aquatic center looks dismal, well, that's because it wasn't open. Yeah, it wasn't open till the end of May, so it makes perfect sense. Last time I showed you expenditures by type of expenditures, this shows you by department, and shows you then, of course, by department where the largest expenditures are. I always like to point out that the police department gets much closer to fully allocated expenses than any other department, and that's a statutory thing, if we had to pull the police department out of our budget, wanna make sure that we have everything that it takes to operate that together, so it's not that they spend more, it's that we account for it closer in the PD than anywhere else. But streets and police are where the money is spent, hu- biggest portion. This page is one we don't talk about very often, which is the other funds of the city, we talk about the general fund and the departments all the time, well, these are all the other funds, and it shows you their balance coming into the year, and how things have moved through the year. Debt service does what it, you think it would, um excise tax, these are all pretty straightforward. Consolidated highway is gasoline tax, uh special parks fund is park impact fees, and alcohol tax actually goes there, some of it. Sales tax city is our recreation tax with a swimming pool, and then the county tax um is here as well. Special alcohol, I'm sad to say, alcohol sales are down, and um that is due to one business that's no longer open here, and they did a lot of catering and things, so those revenues are gone, and then our water and sewer funds.
When it comes to some of these other funds, i- is it, I know sometimes we do transfers where we approve them, but when the money comes in, is it automatically goes like straight to debt service fund, or do we have to transfer it there to?
If it is a, an assessed, a a tax with a mill, a fund with a mill levy, like debt service, when the when the taxes come in, they go straight to debt service and payments go out. If we get, say, gasoline tax, it goes straight to the highway tax fund, and then when we go to spend it, we move it somewhere else, like a capital project fund, or some somewhere that we're going to spend it.
So that's when we move it, is when we're actually gonna go actually use it, okay.
We really try not to pay for projects out of these funds, we have some exceptions, highway tax, we pay for some of the road materials and things our crews use. But otherwise, we move it out and manage it as a project outside of this fund.
So is debt service fund pretty much only for the specials, or is that?
It's both, and then we do transfer money in, so say the sewer debt, we transfer from the sewer fund into the debt fund and pay all the bonds out of the debt.
Okay, all right, that's was my main question. Just the um specifics.
You bet, and just so that you all know, cuz I know some of you are new, the city does not transfer money between funds without approval of this council. So we don't, sometimes I'm like, we put that in the budget, I should just get to move that. But I don't, I come in and tell you what I'm doing, and so there's no surprises, I'm not, it's not a shell game, you know exactly, exactly what's happening.
Well, I knew we did it every once in a while, so I was like, it doesn't seem like I do it that often for it to be that many funds, but if it's automatically coming in, it makes.
Well, and it makes it makes it more protected there for the public as well. Moving something they know that we're not just behind the scenes.
Yeah, just magic. No, it's much better to be that clear about it, to say, I'm going to move, and when you approve things, I'll say, well, we'll make a transfer from here to here, sometimes I'll ask at the same time to make the transfer, sometimes I'll come back and do the transfer separately, just so it's very clear. Um this one is where you see the twenty-six million dollars, even though we have that money in the bank, all of the funds have a purpose and statutory requirement, and so this tells you each fund, the balance it came in with, the revenues, expenditures, and their current balance, and so that's the money in the bank, we reconcile it every month, not only to the bank, but within our system as well, so that we know everything is in balance. The columns over to the left, the first one is, that is a levied tax fund, so those are ones that get money directly from the counties. And then the second column is some funds are budgeted, and my point tonight in going over this is, pretty soon you're going to approve a budget for all of those funds, and I wanted you to see a little background and history of these, and then some of them are not budgeted, like um the Fighting Addiction Fund, we're not required to have a budget for that one, I will present that one to you anyway. So where what we're spending, what comes in and what goes out, and the the budget's point is to provide spending authority, spending authority, and so we want you to understand you're giving yourself permission to spend that money if you if you choose to in the next year. Here are your utility funds, the water and wastewater funds, showing the profit year-to-date. Um it's going pretty well so far this year, we do have some things coming down the road, we'll be as we should, coming in and talking about rates and things, and determining if we need to make a change. Pretty straightforward on our two funds, they are in a positive profitable, we don't really make money on a utility or profit, but it is a self-sustaining um operation for both of them. And then we have the aquatic center, which is not looking very happy at the moment, but it that'll change. Um the other thing at the bottom we haven't done in the past is we're, the we don't bill ourselves for water, but we've started to memo this on here, so you can see the amount of water we use and and the pool um consumes, which has a cost of about fifty-eight hundred dollars so far this year. One of my favorite schedules is this debt schedule, um it's really a big piece of information. Some people ask me, when is the pool paid off, and what's our interest rate on that, and and how much do we owe, and when will it go? That's what this schedule tells you, is every bond that we have that is outstanding, and it shows how much we originally borrowed and how much is owed on it today. As I was doing uh some budget work, there's a couple on here, I think maybe we should, there will pay off completely in twenty twenty-five, and I think we should look at some of the debt payoff like we did with the water fund. Take care of those, and then this schedule is our lease payment schedules, and two or three of these will pay off in twenty twenty-five as well, so we are eliminating debt.
I do have a question. On the pool, go back to the aquatic center. Uh just down on that, the debt schedule. So in twenty-nine, it'll be paid off, or is there, is it a balloon at twenty-nine?
No, it will be paid off in twenty-nine.
Okay, so in five years, we're gonna pay off the two, five.
The pool was also refinanced in uh twenty sixteen, I think that says. It was, I think it built, originally built in twenty twelve or something like that, and then they did a lot of refinancing in twenty sixteen and twenty nineteen, so.
Okay, um what about, I know there's been talk about, there was plans for a second phase, and there was taxes coming in for that. Is that something that, where, has that ever been kind of talked about as far as expansion of the aquatic center? I know we have debt still outstanding, so it's.
You're jumping ahead, I'm gonna talk, the next thing we're gonna talk about is the capital improvement plan, and the aquatic center is on there, and I'll be happy to tell you some details on that.
When I saw twenty-nine, I was like, oh, we can start talking about it for that close.
Well, we haven't, and we, one, we've been doing some heavy maintenance and improvements, obviously. And um you can also see in here, I've passed that schedule, but um the balance that's in that city sales tax fund, that's recreation tax, so that can be spent towards the pool and the parks and and some things like that, and we have done some of that in the last couple of years. We do also allocate, um in twenty-four, we transferred fifty thousand dollars from that sales tax fund. We will transfer to the general fund to pay for some repairs at the pool, um and I'm budgeting the same amount for twenty-five to do the same thing. We'll see other plans um that the aquatic center might have. And then the last twenty-seven pages of this report, which I'm not gonna go through, is actually li- line-by-line detail, anything you would ever like to know by department for the revenue and expenses of the general funds, sewer and water funds, so you can look through here and say, what does the finance department spend on training their people, or what do we spend on meetings, or whatever subject you'd like to look at, that detail is here through May. So that is the snapshot of the city. Um can I answer any questions? You've been asking questions as we go along, so I feel like you're engaged.
I always try to wait to the end, then I forget, so I'm like. Pepper and you throw out, sorry.
Yeah, that's good. Great, I'm going to uh switch over to another one, and while Ashley's helping me, I'm going to give you am I supposed to say, your honor, may I approach? This is the very preliminary. Capital Improvement Plan for twenty-five to twenty-nine. And I wanted to present it to you, um so we could begin to talk about CIP and get your input. Um first, I wanna talk about the budget calendar to show you where we are in the process, and we are I had hoped tonight to talk about mill levy a little bit, but we don't yet have the revenue neutral rate from Johnson County. So I don't have enough real update for you, so we'll do that next time. On the twenty-seventh meeting, we're also going to talk about, not talk about, we're gonna consider a resolution to exceed the revenue neutral rate. I don't have anything that tells me that we are going to magically make the revenue neutral rate work for the city, so I'm expecting we will exceed, or you will consider exceeding, even if we considered kept the mill levy the same. So that will be our next big step on June twenty-seventh. I am not planning for the directors to present their budget. I don't, I will if that is what you would like to do. I know, like, my department is small, I spend just a few thousand dollars outside of people, so it doesn't make sense. But if you would like to hear from certain departments, I'd be happy to schedule that for next time. Um I want it to be constructive, I think that you know, they do, the department directors do a great job of telling you what they're doing and telling you why they're spending money. And I'm happy to have them share that with you, if you find it valuable and constructive. Otherwise, we'll keep moving along and and work through the budget with numbers and and things like that.
I definitely like to hear it from the directors. That's, I mean, that's my personal opinion.
You got it.
Yeah, I'm game.
Then we'll plan for it for next time.
Didn't have to be all at one time, but, you know.
I I think I'll focus first on.
Probably the big budget ones first.
Police and uh public works.
Police and streets, the big two.
Yep, that's that's where the money's spent.
I'm gonna after you.
It's obviously focus area.
Just been itching to get up to the mic.
I know. Can't wait, so we'll definitely plan on those for next time and then kind of see from there. And actually, I was gonna say, the chief always does a great job, so I'll volunteer her, and you picked her anyway, so it worked out. Jacob, a little love it, welcome back from vacation, we need you to do a presentation on your budget. And then, so tonight I wanna talk in a lot more, a kind of preliminary phases of our capital improvement plan, that's C I P. And for those of you who are newer, this is the five year capital plan for the city. This is a living document, it changes as it needs to. What you see tonight may be a little different when we get to the final book. Um, you will have, you will approve this, not with the budget, but alongside the budget. Um, when we actually approve it in September, and that will be the final one we go forward with, and then we'll keep working from there. It is our roadmap for the major projects of the city, it's the steps in accomplishing the comprehensive plan. And it outlines investment in support of city activities. Are we spending this money, investing where you want, think the direction should be? And hopefully that comes from the public, giving you the direction of what they'd like to see in our city. So what I did tonight is I took out the noise of the C I P. No color coding, I don't really want you to worry about what piece of the comprehensive plan is in there. I'm gonna give you a little homework assignment for next time, and looking at this plan to say, are these the right projects? This is a five year plan, there are just a handful of new ones on here. Most of them are projects that have been around for a while, because we've been doing five year plans for a long time, and obviously they move along every year. And so I want you to take the time to look at, do we have the right projects? Is there something missing? And is there something on here you don't think we should be focused on? And so I split this more by functions, so I got all the sidewalk. And gutter and curbing together, and I got all those streets together, and I got things I call traffic, like stoplights. And railroad crossings and things like that, I I reorganized it into functions, I thought would help you. Help all of us, actually. The cars projects that were approved earlier this year are all in here and updated. Um, my next step is to send it to Dan Miller. And have him go through and see if there's any updates or anything missing from here he'd like to add, and then Jacob has been working on this as well. So I'm happy to discuss any project or any part of this that you would like to or answer any questions. But I'm not looking for you tonight to give me the answer. I feel like I need to give you that information, I'm also happy to email a spreadsheet if you prefer to work that way. Where you can put your feedback together and I'll get it from you next week, next time.
Off the, just off the cuff, I would like to see more money allocated to sidewalks over the bikes and trails.
Me too.
Over the bikes and trails?
At least swap that, if not a little bit more, um, heavy towards sidewalk construction. That's just my initial thought, and the other one is just the Public Works Building. Um, in twenty six, I know we've talked about a couple of different things, but I'd like to find out more about what we're planning on, or we'd like to do. Kinda see that, just what it is.
I'd like to see more on both of those. I mean, that, to me, they're, they're both a different animal, but I think they're both. The public has said they're both really important, so obviously sidewalks are probably slightly more important, because they get us from. Maybe necessary places we need to go versus trails, maybe more recreation versus. Um, but I still think that there's been a lot of public input that both of those are real high priorities, so. I think as far as our budget, we don't have those on a very high priority status with the amount of money we're throwing at them, so I think the public has. Stated that they want that on a higher priority, so I think we need to kind of follow suit a little bit.
And some of that uh under trails i- is actually gonna act as a, as a sidewalk.
Whi- which I'm fine with, yeah, as long as it's it's making up for the lack of nothing, you know, nothing being there. So I don't, yeah, if it's bike pass because it's gonna be replacing that, or if it's just gonna be a trail that's not actually gonna help get through town. Then I would say let's put it towards stuff that actually can be used next to the roads and things like that.
Pedestrian traffic.
So kinda like the presentation earlier tonight, I mean, that was technically, I would probably consider a trail, but it would act as a sidewalk in that whole areas.
Which I'd be happy to have those too, yeah, something, just something. So yeah, I, as, however we have to allocate it, but yeah, as long as it's gonna be acting in that capacity is what I'm most worried about.
That's why we're having the conversation.
Again, municipal complex, seems a little early for that, it's a lot of money, um, public works. I'm sure there's a selling point for that too, so we gotta look at all those things, but. The two hot topics for me are gonna be the, or the main hot topic's gonna be the sidewalks.
I I think the sidewalks and trails are are pretty interchangeable, like it it's gonna boil down more to the terrain. Uh, the landscape, depending on what's best to put there, but as long as we're. Either replacing stuff that's no good anymore, or building new where there's no existing. Those kind of hit about the same for me. The pool's gonna be an interesting discussion, I think, um, as far as a a future phase two and. With the complications and issues we've been having recently as well, so uh I I would expect us to have a pretty long. Or multiple long discussions about that. The rest of it seems pretty, pretty reasonable and in pretty good place, the, yeah, the municipal complex does seem. That that doesn't seem very far away, um, so, yeah, and that, yeah, let's take it, look at the road stuff.
The other thing I'll comment on there is Jacob is working with his team, um, about developing a plan for the Aquatic Center that's not just. Whatever, whatever, and then let's build a new one, or build another one. It's more of a, hey, these are, these are all the pieces and what needs to be done, a real maintenance upkeep plan for the pool. And I look forward to seeing that be either a part of the budget or part of the um C I P, so that we have a plan for the pool. Not a cross your fingers for the pool.
And there, is there land already allocated for an expansion?
There is more land there.
But we don't, we don't have it, it's not ours. It's not like we've, we have to go out and purchase more land.
If we choose to keep where, keep, one way to expand would be to have another pool. You know, and maybe another part of town as we grow or something like that, just depends on how it all works.
I agree with what everyone's saying about the priorities that we're hearing from the community, but. Pretty big priority is to, it's a big ticket item, it's wastewater. Expansion and stuff, I mean, that's real. It's a lot of money, no one wants to talk about or spend money on something like that, but we need to get in front of that.
To speak to that, we're, we're reaching our capacity in in a pretty rapid motion. We're obviously still growing pretty rapidly, not quite as fast as we were growing, you know, a year or two ago, but we're still growing fast. And we're gonna hit that, and that whole process takes, you know, four or five years, and we're gonna hit that capacity before then, so yeah, I would. I agree with you, nobody, nobody likes to talk about sewer, it's not a fun thing that you can see, you know, go outside and. See a big success story about it, but but it's, but it's real.
Let it not work and see.
But that's also what scares me kind of about the complex and, you know, the other big ticket items, like wastewater we have to do, and that's, you know. We'll have it coming out of our, into the house, you know, type thing, but I don't know, it's just, there's a lot of big ticket stuff, but. Wastewater's the only one I feel like we have to do right now.
I also wanna point out to you that, that the line there that says expansion wastewater treatment is a very large number. I think a hundred sixty million dollars, um, out on the right hand side, more than fifty percent of this budget is a wastewater plant. There's a lot of steps along the way, we don't know if that's gonna be a sixty million or a hundred and sixty million dollar project based on. The people around us and what businesses we acquire and what you, how it works, and so we've kind of put in, um. A ballpark, and over the next five years, steps that need to be taken. But again, you're gonna make a lot of decisions along the way here that will shape what that number really looks like.
And we're obviously going after federal grants and state grants and. For, for all different types of funding to come up with that, cause obviously, you know, we as a city or a community can't afford to. Put millions and millions into a sewer plant, so. Be very creative on how to come up with whatever size plant we need to fund that.
And the plant will come with revenue, whether it's from. Maybe another city who partners with us, or it comes from more houses in our city, or whatever. Um, it comes with revenue as well, and we do have a uh financial model that works through all that with us. Takes all those things into account, so we can be realistic about the cash needs and the capital needs and everything of our utilities, so.
When you're looking at the traffic signalization at a hundred ninety first, is that like what our portion would be, or that what the total project would be?
At a hundred ninety first, we do not have a partner in that at this time, so it's a full cost.
So K dot wouldn't jump in.
Well, current, w- we've requested um some assistance from Representative David's office. Um, we've submitted an application, I think it was for maybe a little over two million dollars. Uh, i- i- it's, it's kind of hit and miss on whether you get any of those funds or not. Uh, you know, we may get some, we may get a portion, we may get it all, or none, uh, we. I, it's supposed to be around the end of August when we hear back from that, it's an election year. So we've been kind of warned that it could uh spill over into maybe November, December timeframe. Uh, but at some time, we should hear something back from that, uh, you know, if we can even get a couple hundred thousand, that would be a a great benefit to us. We're looking at uh some other possible options, which would maybe include a C I D in that area. If there's any commercial development that goes in, um, so we're, we're looking at various options. Uh, K dot, I I I don't think they're gonna contribute a significant portion of that. Majority's either gonna come from some type of grant funding for the city.
Though we are exploring all the options, we're working hard and meet, meeting with a lot of different entities to try to. Try to fund that, because we all see the importance and the need of that.
Yeah, that's the total cost of that project without any help.
Estimated, yes, no help. The next, um, when this report all comes together, there's another page that talks about. Is this driven by more population, is this driven by more revenue to the city, is it driven by special benefit districts or grants or other funding? That kind of describes it in far more detail about how some of these would be funded. Okay, that's what I have uh for you this evening. Um, again, for the next time, and you're welcome to call me or emailing me about these if you'd like to. Um, but I'd like to know, is there something on here that's missing, something you think we're. The people are asking for, you feel needs to be done, or is there something on here that needs to be removed? There is a list closer to the end of it, that of projects that we are taking out, um, for different reasons. Um, changes in our uh city that um doesn't make them uh relevant, I guess anymore. And then I'll also have more information about grants and funding and things like that to go with it, so, great.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thanks for your time.
Next item on the agenda is water tower use, another discussion item, and Mr. Lau, you have the floor.
I think I can get this done quicker than Ms. Dunn's presentation, but yeah, we'll see. So uh, we have a lease with Verizon to uh use some wireless facilities on top of our water tower. Um, they pay us a monthly lease amount. Um, it is more than I paid monthly when I rented a house, so that's a pretty good deal for the city. Uh, cause it's not even a whole house, but we are up to renewing that, uh, Verizon has started that process, and there are two options to walk through with you all. Um, because this is a pretty significant amount of money, staff talked it over, we couldn't really pick. Uh, which option we like more, so we wanted to bring it to you all to kind of see what you like, so. One option is to continue taking monthly lease payments. Um, so the renewal we're talking about won't kick in until twenty twenty eight, so this isn't the most urgent thing, but we are trying to push this through a little bit, just to kind of get it done. That would um have monthly rent payments about sixteen hundred a month and going, there's three percent escalation every year after that. The other option that Verizon has offered is a lump sum for uh a forty year agreement. And that would be two hundred forty thousand dollars. Um, so it's sort of a, do you want the money upfront, or do you want the monthly payments? This isn't gonna surprise you, the lump sum is less over the term of the whole agreement. By a pretty decent amount, it works out to about five hundred dollars a month over the life of the agreement. That said, it is a burden of hand, it's money you guys have. Um, so I guess the alternative is is less, a little less money, but you have it up front and you can spend it on sidewalks, or whatever you wanna do now. I'm sure Ms. Dunn would love to have a little extra for this next budget. The upside of the monthly lease is it's more money in the long term, however. This is a, not necessarily a critical part of Verizon's infrastructure. Um, so over the next forty years, the odds that they really still are paying a monthly lease for this. To me seems a little low, they haven't told me they're gonna stop paying it or take it down, but. Candidly, think about what telecommunications looked like forty years ago, it's a lot different than what it looks like now, and it's gonna. Exponentially change again over the next forty years, so I think counting on that monthly payment. Over the entire forty years is probably a little wish, bit of wishful thinking. Uh, but yeah, wanted to bring it to you all, what your thoughts are, these numbers aren't really up for negotiation. Yeah, so it's a take it or leave it deal on either end, the choice we have isn't how much, but it's just whether we want it upfront or monthly, so.
And it's five hundred um for the full payout is.
So the the lump sum would be two hundred forty thousand dollars paid at once upfront. Um, which works out to roughly five hundred dollars a month, it's kind of value.
It's about a third of what a monthly payment. What we gotta think about is inflation and all those things, so how much is that sixteen hundred gonna be worth in thirty years?
Hundred and fifty payments, so a hundred, or a hundred and fifty months.
So I ran the math. Yeah, warning you guys that lawyers are notoriously bad at math. I calculated it out too, if we stay on the monthly payment plan, we would hit that two hundred forty thousand in twenty thirty six. So about twelve months to get there, based on what we're getting now, which increases, and then the bump up in twenty twenty eight, which will continue to increase. So there is some inflation bump in there, three percent a year, depends on how inflation's going then, again, we have no idea. Um, so essentially, you know, you're talking about what happens in thir- twenty thirty six of. Are we still gonna need that, are they still going to need it, are we still gonna own that water tower, what's gonna change? Water treatment might change quite a bit then, so there's a lot going on, uh, it's a really forward thinking question, which is up to you guys to decide, so.
So we basically have to determine in twelve years from now, is there a pretty good chance they're still gonna be using that tower? Otherwise, it makes more sense to take the lump sum, I'm more in favor of keeping the payment, but I understand. It's a hard one, because twelve years from now, I, I mean, just think twelve years ago, what telecommunications looked like.
But they can't back out of it in twelve years, can they?
Well, so it renews every few years, so they would just not renew it, and also candidly, if they just said we're taking this down. We're not gonna pay you, I, the cost to pay me to go sue them for that is, it's a wash at best, so. Um, candidly, this antenna right now is sort of a redundancy function for them. Um, most telecommunications providers are jumping headfirst into five G. Uh, and putting a five G antenna at the top of water tower doesn't make a lot of sense, cause they need to be lower in, and there's just more of them. Um, so my understanding is that Verizon's going to be pushing for more five G lower down along the highway, this is just sort of a. This is their backup option in case a bunch of other things fail, which makes it easier for them to, at some point, just say, we don't really need you guys, we're paying you too much already.
Since it's not till twenty eight, are they willing to pay it out now, so that we get it off ta- off the books?
So they would pay it out roughly now, it's a longer, it's probably a three to four month process, but they would be paying it out.
So yeah, they would pay it now instead of.
Hopefully this year, yeah.
I mean, if, if they, if they can back out every five years, yeah, I would say take the, take the lump sum. Cause the likelihood that they're gonna be around in fifteen years is pretty low, as far as using that.
Yeah, if it wasn't telecommunications, I'd probably for sure say, let's keep on the payment, but with, with as fast changing as technology is. I'd say probably take it while we can get it.
That means they're thinking it's probably only gonna be a third of the timeframe too, if they're gonna pay that out.
Especially if it's not a five G usage now, cause I mean, everything's going to five G or six G or something better than that, whatever the next better thing is. Especially if it's not a five G usage now, cause I mean, everything's going to five G or six G or something better than that, whatever the next better thing is.
I never heard of six G, but that'd be kind of cool.
The next big secret, so, yeah, okay, um, then we will bring it back to you, the final agreement will be a council item for you all to actually approve, so you're not approving. The payout now, we just wanted to kind of get some ideas as we walked in the river of Verizon, I don't wanna get too far negotiating the wrong contract, so we will get that moving and bring it back to you. When they're ready, thank you.
Quick question on that, sorry. Does that just um only includes what they have there now, this doesn't give them, you know, opportunity to put a whole bunch more stuff on there, right?
Correct, yeah. Pick which avenue it says no.
All right, that ends formal council action at this time, we'll move on to announcements and reports. I don't really have a whole lot, other than I've spent most of the time in the hospital with my youngest daughter this week, doing a bunch of. Bunch of studying and stuff, so we just got home late this afternoon, so glad, glad to all be home under one roof, um, so that's, that's really. All I got, we dedicated the, I guess the other thing is, we dedicated the um fishing jetties. Um, since, since the last meeting, so that was fun to get that dedicated and we're, you know, very grateful for the donations and stuff for that, and then. I went out last week with my kids and fished there and we fished for maybe. I don't know, hour and a half and caught thirteen fish, so I. They were, and it was fun to be able to, you know, when you have younger kids, to be out there where you're not in the dirt on the bank of a. Of a lake trying to, you know, I, I mean, let's be honest, I pretty much spent the whole time changing worms, but. But it, it was fun, it was nice to, that was really the first time I've had extended use on the jetties. Um, used it a few times, but so, it was fun, it was nice, nice to utilize that, so I enjoyed dedicating that, and once again, thank you to the, the people that donated that. Mr. Young?
No report.
Mr. Van Houten?
No report.
Mr. Peel?
Uh, two things, um, Mr. Spear and I were able to have a meeting this week. Uh, to discuss some details about the Blue Cross Blue Shield Fitness Court project that we've been working on. And uh, that has, um, got some key hurdles accomplished this week, so. Feel like that project is moving forward here shortly and. Um, likely to see us be able to break ground on that pretty soon, so excited for that. Um, Ms. Dunn has worked a lot on that as well, we've got a, a Zoom call meeting with the, the group next week, so that should be really productive. But, um, had a really good meeting on that one this week. Um, the other one I had in, uh, Mr. Van Houten didn't bring it up, but um, he's gonna, he's gonna be our next representative. Um, and I am really excited that we're gonna have a, a member of Spring Hill. Uh, City Limits, so the city of Spring Hill, uh, representing us at the state level, I think that is gonna be. Enormously helpful for us in many, many ways, and I'm really proud that he, you know, went out on a line to go do that. And it's really exciting to have that uh relationship already established before he goes there, um. I asked uh the clerk to do a little bit of research about this, and she did a really awesome job and got me some cool information. Um, there's only been four other people from Spring Hill that have represented at the state level, and all four of them were back in the eighteen hundreds. So it's been well over a hundred years since anyone's represented Spring Hill at state level.
Do you wanna say anything to that, Mr. Van?
Thank you, Mr. Peel. Now, it's just gonna be an honor um to serve and, uh, yeah, I'd look to bring winds back to Spring Hill and the entire district, uh, twenty sixth district. And uh, serve the people in Topeka, so, thank you.
Is that all you had, Mr. Peel?
That was it, those are my two things.
Mississippi Beck?
I have no amount now.
Mr. Rembraken?
Uh, yes, um, I have a very difficult announcement to make. I regret to uh announce that I have to resign from city council already, I know, I look like a fool. Effective July twelfth, we will be moving outside of Spring Hill. Long story short, my wife and I had been planning on. Building a, our forever dream home in Spring Hill, um. And we were going through design phases and kind of looked at something more for ideas and. We were presented with an opportunity that we just couldn't resist. Um, still be close to Spring Hill, but. Not in the city, um. It was a very tough decision, but I think it's what we both want, and uh, I sincerely apologize. To the mayor, to my council members, to the staff, to the community. I would have never put in my application or accepted this appointment if I thought this was even a possibility. It, it, and. I feel horrible, I look like a fool, but this is all on me, and um. Pleasure for short term, and. I sh- I wish I wouldn't have put you in this position. But I really care about this community and I'm not going anywhere, I'm, I'm still going to be a very active. Member of the community, I own a business in town, I own a building, I pay property taxes. I'm involved in a lot of organizations, I give a lot of my time and money to this town and that's not gonna change. Um, but I have to resign and. For anybody watching in the community, one thing I've learned in my short time is. This community has a very dedicated and qualified mayor, council and staff. I have learned that and I can say it with deep trust, you're in good hands.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate that. It's a tough one. Well, thank you for, I know that was, that was tough for you to say, and uh, we'll definitely miss you and didn't get much time up here with you. But uh, I try, I always say, even, even with my business and everything else, that family is the most important thing, so, um. It's a tough one, but uh, thank you, thank you for your time that you did serve for us and uh, glad you'll be sticking around in the community, so. Mr. Massey?
Uh, just a real quick one, uh, if you've been driving around town, you've probably seen uh contractors out there working on the streets. Um, we're, we're starting the twenty twenty four street program, has started in, in full bore. Uh, so if you see those, please be patient, um, we're moving forward with those projects. And hopefully we'll have them completed this summer and early, maybe early fall, so just wanted to put that out there.
And some of the big, just to touch on that, some of the bigger projects, along with lots of other smaller ones, a few of the bigger projects are. Victory Street from two hundred and twenty third to Webster, that'll be repaved. Or paved, I guess it was never really officially paved, it was more of a chip and seal over gravel to begin with, so that will be officially paved, which will make. I'm sure everyone there uh real happy, um, so we'll get that, and then also South Woodland, so from. Two hundred and seventh street to two hundred fifteenth street, so that's kind of, those two spots are some of the two. Remaining real bad areas in town, so those will both get hit over the next few months, along with many other. Smaller projects and some chip and seal and other things, so we're really excited to get some of those, those real bad areas, we tackled a lot of the worst ones last year. And then we're trying to hit some of the remaining real bad ones along with other things, so yeah. Mr. Lau?
I'll just add one quick report, um. Since I'm sure someone out there is thinking it, but we are working up our charter, charter ordinance changes that we've been talking about with you all for filling vacancies. Um, so staff is reviewing that, it is a long process to make sure we do it right, so that hopefully we only have to hit this once. Uh, but we are working that up, um, and we will, we'll plan to have that to you as quick as we can, but. Um, ideally within the next month, hopefully, but.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that, cause now we're gonna be. Hey, no, I don't hate you for it, I understand.
Our new ordinances in, in place.
Yeah, that's why, I just wanted to have those in place before we do whatever we need to do, so.
Chief Henson?
It is uh the season for solicitors. We are proactively going through neighborhoods and um making contact with solicitors that we do see, letting them. Educating them on the ordinance.
The times that they need to stop and not knocking on doors where there's no solicitation uh signs on. Um, we have uh, we have several companies in the area that are doing this right now, so we're kind of taking names and finding out. Which companies are involved, um, we have, uh, we will and have taken enforcement action when needed. Um, the thing that I would ask, cause I know that you've had some, some of you have had some calls or some, um, questions from. People in your communities about it is to call us sooner than later. Um, when we hear about it hour later, so it's very difficult to find them. Um, and to identify them, and if they are violating it, and you know, we'll ask you if you wanna. Uh, if the person wants to uh file any charges, because there'll need to be a witness in court. Um, so those are some of the parameters, I think we, uh. And, and my officers are out proactively driving through neighborhoods, doing uh some proactive contact, not just waiting for the phone calls, but. If you do get any questions, please strongly suggest that they call us immediately if somebody is violating the. Uh, ordinance, which is after seven P M, or if you have a, a sign on your door that says no solicit, no solicitors.
Does it have to be a specific sign, or is it just no soliciting at all?
I think we actually have stickers, do we not, we have stickers?
Say, I think we can get them up here, right?
Yeah, that have the ordinance and it says no solicitors, um.
It's also on our website, so if somebody wants to print it, they can just say no soliciting.
It, it can say, if they get it at the store or whatever.
Yeah, you can buy them at Walmart or just about anywhere else.
Yeah, that was my question, like what recourse, I'm assuming they should call the non emergency line.
They can, or if, and the non emergency line is not the administrative line at the Spring Hill PD, that is the dispatch non emergency number. Um, through Johnson County Sheriff's Department, but they can, if they do not know a number, they can call nine one one. And then they can say it's non emergency, they'll ask you that immediately, anyway if it's an emergency, and they'll transfer you to the non emergency line.
Don't try to keep them at your house, don't hold them hostage, just call and.
Thank you for that, chief, I did have a citizen that contacted me about this issue.
Yes, and I've had several speak to me about it as well, so. And I don't have a no solicitor sign on my door, but I've definitely had quite a few come to my door lately, so, yeah, definitely the season. Mr. Burton? Madam Clerk? Mrs. Dunn?
No report.
All right, with that, that ends announcements and reports, and we canceled the executive session, so with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Samud.
Second?
Got a motion second, is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero, have a great night, everyone.